Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the May 7, 2019, Special Meeting Budget Study Session of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call?
Councilmember Zagajanian.
Present.
Here.
Narpetian.
Here.
Sinadian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian. Here. May we have your report?
Agenda for the May 7, 2019, Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on Thursday, May 2, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. For you today is the Interim Director of Finance regarding Budget Study Session Number Two, covering Department Presentations, Capital Improvement Program, and Fee Changes.
Thank you. Ms. Beers.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As the city clerk read into the record, this is our second Budget Study Session, and we will be covering the summary of all budget funds by type, departmental dashboards, so we will be talking about each of the departments. Capital Improvement Program, proposed citywide fee changes. We'll touch on the calendar and talk about next week, where we will be covering any follow-up items from the City Council, any items that we may not get through today, and talk about Measure S Funds next week. Today's probably the longest of your Budget Study Sessions, just based on the amount of material we'd like to cover with you. All of these pieces kind of go together, hence we put them together so that you can have a comprehensive understanding of next year's budget. Both Michelle Flynn and Ms. Adrina Sayan will take us through the budget slides. Please stop us if you have questions, since we do have a number of slides. Stop us at that slide, and we will be able to answer those questions for you as we move ahead. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I will turn it over to Ms. Flynn.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Welcome to Budget Study Session Number Two. Before we dive into the 2019-20 proposed budget, I wanted to remind you all and everybody watching of the various types of funds that we have in the budget. The two major types are governmental funds and proprietary funds. The governmental funds are used for specific governmental purposes. There's the biggest being the general fund. That's reported on a modified accrual basis, which is a combination of a full accrual and a cash basis. Proprietary funds operate like a business. The largest one there would be our electric operation, as well as sewer, water, refuse, and those are reported on a full accrual basis. The general fund, like I mentioned, is the primary fund of the city. It counts for all the revenues and expenditures that are not restricted for use. Special revenue funds are primarily grant funds. Those are grants that we receive from cities, state, and federal government, and those are restricted for the specific use of those grants. We have one debt service fund, that is to account for our certificate of participation and the payment of the debt service on that transaction. And the capital improvement funds are for all of our construction of our capital infrastructure and the capital outlays that we do. Proprietary funds include the enterprise funds, as I mentioned, the largest being the electric fund, the sewer fund, water as well. Those are for our external customers, and those are charged and are supposed to be a self-supporting fund. Same with internal service funds. The difference there is they serve our internal customers. So our medical fund, workers' compensation, fleet fund, those are for the use of the city government, and those also are supposed to be self-supporting, and they charge a rate to all the user departments. So diving into our summary of appropriations for all funds, Slide Number Seven, you'll see that we have our governmental funds listed at the top, starting with the general fund and the proposed fiscal year 1920 budget of $236,968,000. This is the number that we looked at last week in Budget Study Session Number One, where we focused on the general fund. The increase over last year is a little over 9.1 million. About half of that is attributable to the recreation fund, moving from a special revenue fund into the general fund, as well as the two filming funds. So that accounts for about half of that increase. In there also, as we'll mention when we get to the fire department, is the Recruit Academy, which is a little over $1 million. And then we have the net difference of mostly salaries and benefit changes, increases and decreases that would account for the rest of that increase. Our special revenue funds, there's a decrease of about 1.9 million. Again, we did move three funds out of this category into the general fund, but there are some offsets to that because of just basically the revenue that's driven from the grants that we received, so the appropriation is a little bit lower this year. Debt service fund, again, that handles the payment to our certificates of participation. Capital Improvement Program, as Ms. Sayan will go through, is a $16 million budget for this coming year. And then the two proprietary categories, enterprise funds, $430,676,000. Primarily, that is the electric operation and the various capital improvements and other purchased power, et cetera. There are obviously other funds in there that we'll touch on. And the internal service fund category is about almost $112 million. Overall, the total city proposed budget for next year, $908 million, a little over $908 Going through the general fund by department, you'll see some, all the departments listed, and I'll highlight some of the numbers for you. For our city attorney's office, we did have an increase there of a little over $587,000. That's primarily for a shift in a city attorney coming from one of our other departments back into the city attorney's office. That's just in how they charge. They still report up through the city attorney's office. There's also a new position added, and then just some net benefits and salary increases there. The decrease in the city clerk's office is attributable to the election budget, is not in this next year's budget. That will be coming to council as a separate item when the time is right and when we need that. In community development, we had the elimination of a couple of positions, so that will show a decrease there, as well as some other shifts. And in community services and parks, this $4 million increase, the largest portion of that is the shift in the recreation fund coming into the general fund, still under community services and parks umbrella. Fire, we have the Recruit Academy as part of that 2.7 million and other salary and benefit increases. Going on to Slide Number Nine, we have library arts and culture. They had some increases overall, just in salaries and benefit changes. Management services, this is where the filming funds from the special revenue funds collapsed into the general fund. They are now housed under management services. And then in police, we have $1.7 million increase, mainly attributable to utilities and other salary and benefit increases. So overall, as you saw on the first few slides, our 236, almost $237 million budget in the general fund. Moving on to special revenue funds, again, these are mainly all funded through some sort of a grant and are all restricted for the purposes that they are intended, and they are mainly revenue-driven. So the appropriations are pretty much guided by the revenues that are received or projected to be received for the coming year. And in some cases, there are increases; in other cases, there are decreases for a variety of reasons. Many of these funds also have a fund balance that they can draw on, so just because they have a little bit higher appropriation, they probably can be utilizing some fund balance as well. The, our Section Eight Housing Fund, that's Fund Number 2020, under Housing Assistance Fund, that had an increase there. We had some increases in salaries and benefits and other portable voucher program. Down, our other funds down at the bottom here, we have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that had an increase. That is, we have the new housing in Lufi in there. If that is approved, that will be recognized in that fund. If it is not, we will make the adjustment in the appropriation afterwards. Moving on to Slide 11, there's additional, more special revenue funds. As I mentioned, there's a lot of them. Low to moderate housing, you'll see the decrease there. That is primarily driven from the 20% transfer that we do from the general fund when we receive the loan repayment from the state, so it's slightly lower this year because we aren't getting as much as we did last year. The recreation fund and filming funds, you can see those two are negative, and those are collapsing back to the general fund, as I mentioned. The parking fund has an increase of about 4.2 million. That's primarily due to the new contract for parking enforcement. Measure W is our new fund to account for the new state measure, $1.2 million. Slide 12, additional revenues in the special revenue fund. We have Measure R, local and regional funds, and Prop A.
Yes, Mr. President.
A quick question about parking fund?
Yes.
How did it increase from, by 4.1 million?
So that is mainly the new parking contract, as well as some projects, capital improvement projects that they're doing at Marketplace, I believe, and the Civic Center Garage.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Councilman Narpetian, as you may recall, early last year, council awarded a contract for enforcement services to a private contractor. Our anticipation is that the new revenues that we'll bring in, it will net out about $1 million, so that's accounted for here, as well as, like Michelle mentioned, three major capital improvement projects at our parking structures.
You mean, say, projects? How do these projects translate into revenues?
This is not revenue, this is total budget.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so continuing on through special revenues, you'll see at the bottom here, we have the special events fund. Again, that's one that is collapsing back to the general fund, the $1.2 million. And nutritional meals, that's pretty much standard as we've had in the past. Cable access fund, there's a decrease there because we don't have the same level of capital projects this coming year as we had in the past. So overall, the total special revenue funds amount to $109,520,000 proposed for fiscal As I mentioned, the one debt service fund we have is for our certificates of participation on the police building. That debt service is projected to be a $3 million payment next year, so it's a slight increase. This levels out over the next 11 years, so we probably won't see much of an increase or decrease because it is now a fixed-rate instrument. Our capital improvements fund, which we'll be diving into a little bit more thoroughly later in the presentation, but overall, these are by department, the various amounts that are proposed for different capital improvement projects, for a total of $7,664,000. And we also have our state gas tax fund, parks mitigation fee, and the new housing mitigation fee fund. So total capital improvements is 6.4 million. I'm sorry, 16.4, thank you. Our enterprise funds, these are the business-type activities, all rate-driven or fee-based. So our sewer fund, being the first one, that is listed at the top there, $36.5 million budget, and there's a decrease of a little over $3 million. That's mainly due to a difference in capital projects for this next year. Refuse fund, a decrease of 1.3 million, so the total budget proposed is 27.3 million. We have a new fund under GWP, which is the Fiber Optic Fund, and that's estimated at $220,000 for this coming year. Verdugo Fire Communications, this is $5.6 million proposed budget. The decrease is mainly attributable to less capital improvements that are being done this coming year. And then we have our largest being the electric operation, and the main increase there is from purchased power and other capital improvement projects. Water is listed down at the bottom at 56 million with a slight increase. And then our water depreciation, that's where the capital projects are, and then the customer paid. So our total enterprise fund operations in total proposed budget is $430,676,000 for next year. The internal service funds is the last group of funds that we have. Starting with our fleet fund, we have an $18.6 million budget proposed, a slight decrease based overall on the less vehicles being purchased. The helicopter fund, which is the joint operation we have with the city of Burbank, we are buying a new helicopter next year, so that's where you see that increase. That represents our half of that payment. And then we have our ISD infrastructure and applications fund, just overall less projects for next year, building maintenance. And then all of our benefit-type funds, unemployment insurance, liability, workers' comp, dental, all have various increases or decreases just based on the rates and how we have to keep those funds healthy moving forward. And in total, our proposed budget for our internal service funds is almost $112 million, so it's $111.8 million, a slight decrease over last year. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Adrina Sayan. She'll take us through all the departmental dashboards, as well as the capital improvement program.
Good morning, Mayor Najarian, members of council, Adrina Sayan, and I'll be covering the departmental dashboards, as well as the 19-20 capital improvement program. I'm jumping into the departmental budgets. We're going to do a quick look at the dashboards for each department. Looking at admin services, finance is the first department. The total proposed budget for 19-20 is $6.2 million, almost. 5.2 of that is in salaries and benefits, and 1 million of it is in M&amp;O. Looking at the total full-time position count for admin services, there are 36.35 full-time positions. You see a fraction, not a full position, because there are positions in finance that are partly paid for by other departments, so there's a breakdown. There's positions that are charged directly to grants that they support, so you're not seeing the full count being captured in admin services. And there's no hourly FDE budgeted for 19-20 in the finance department. Some departmental highlights include creation of a financial reports for city's new system, Tyler Munis. We've implemented the Tyler Munis system already. We've been live for five months, and now we're in the phases of trying to develop some reports that could be used citywide for presentation purposes, for analyzing data and such. Upgrades to the Munis ERP system through coordination with HR and ISD, as well as continuation of enhancements of processes while ensuring strong internal controls. There's only one fund in the admin services fund, it's just all general fund budgeted, and the total general fund budget, as you saw earlier, is 6.2 million, almost up $389,000. This increase over last year is primarily due to project management staff that were charged to the ERP project, no longer being charged out. Since the project is live and is up and running, we cannot directly charge these staff on an ongoing basis, so they've been brought back to the general fund. Moving on to the city attorney's department, the total budget for the city attorney's office is $11.4 million. Four and a half of it is in salaries and benefits, while 6.9 of it is in M&amp;O. Looking at the full-time position count, there are 20 full-time positions budgeted for 19-20 in the city attorney's office, and there's 1.92 hourly full-time equivalents budgeted, for a total of 21.92 hourly and full-time positions in the city attorney's office. Some of the highlights for city attorney's office include working with GWP on implementation of grace and project approvals, an alternative energy RFP process, an EIR for the biogas renewable project, defending litigation challenging EIR for South Glendale Community Plan, and working on training module for Trending Brown Act and public records issues. There are two funds that are in the city attorney's office. The general fund component is 4.4 million proposed for 19-20, up almost $600,000, as Ms. Flynn previously covered. This is because there was an employee shift. A senior assistant city attorney position was brought back from, charging out to grants was brought back to the general fund, and in addition, an additional assistant city attorney position was approved at third quarter. Looking at the liability insurance fund, there is a decrease of 414,000 over last year with a proposed budget of almost $7 million for 19-20, and this is because less costs are being allocated via the cost allocation plan to this fund as a part of the 19-20 budget.
I have a question on that. So we just keep contributing to that fund? Does it have a balance?
Yes, it does have a balance. This fund is, sorry, Mayor Najarian, members of council, this fund does have a fund balance, and every year, as a part of our budget process, we do actually do analysis of the fund balance and try to figure out what their rate should be for new year. And their rate has actually been adjusted up for this fund from 3.5% to 4.7% to keep the fund healthy, but you're seeing appropriation decrease on the cost side, not on the revenue side, because there's just less costs being allocated to this fund from the general fund in terms of cost allocation recovery. That's what that 414,000 decreases.
So this covers, like, our self-insured retention and our liability for liability claims? Is that what that is?
Correct. It's for both our insurance, but also we reserve a certain amount for all the cases based on risk exposure, that sort of thing.
Okay, so both insurance premium payment and a reserve for non-covered claims?
Correct. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the fund balance as of last fiscal year, the audited number is $7.6 million in reserves.
Looking at the city clerk dashboards, the total proposed budget for 19-20 is 1.1 million, 785,000 of that is in salaries and benefits, while 334,000 is in the M&amp;O. Total full-time positions, six in the city clerk's office with 2.10 hourly FDE equivalents. Some of the departmental highlights include overseeing and coordinating the elections for March 2020, implementing a citywide records management policy, launching of electronic agenda packet and report software, and finally, scanning and logging archives of city records. The city clerk is fully funded by the general fund, so the decrease that you're seeing from prior year of 332,000 is because we pulled the elections budget out of the 19-20 as it was previously covered, and it'll be brought back at a later time when the elections are happening. City treasurer, salaries and benefits budget, 723,000, M&amp;O 127,000, for a total proposed budget of $850,000, $872 for 19-20. There are five full-time positions in the city treasurer's office, and 16 of an hourly FDE equivalent, for a total of 5.16 positions in the city treasurer's office. Some of the departmental highlights include working with ISD on the city's payment card industry data security standards, PCI compliance, and as well as working with finance and ISD on the city's post-implementation of Tyler Munis. As discussed before, the total budget proposed for 19-20 is $850,000, up $57,000 from prior year due to salary and benefit increases occurring in the section. Looking at community development, the total budget for community development is 60.1 million. 16.7 of that is in the salaries and benefits category, while 43 million is in the M&amp;O category. There are 119.45 full-time positions in the city development department, community development department, 15.35 of that is an hourly full-time equivalents. Looking at some departmental highlights, land use element is one of the highlights for the department, as well as tech week, business attraction for high-end restaurants, Class A office space, next affordable housing project, exploration, and streetcar possibility.
Yes.
So with the community development, we have the planning, am I correct, building, housing is part of it?
Correct.
And economic development? Is this four departments, or there's more?
Add to that neighborhood, let me try them again. Planning, housing, building and safety, economic development, neighborhood services, and then an administrative group.
And there's administrative?
Administrative group that does all the administrative for the department.
Thank you.
Looking at the general fund, 16.6 million is proposed for 19-20. It's down 829,000. There's elimination of positions, as well as reductions in contractual services for 19-20. The housing assistance fund is up 1.3 million. This is revenue-driven fund, as previously mentioned, and it's towards direct assistance for Section Eight vouchers. Looking at Slide 32, home grant fund is up 600,000. It's just one-time settlement money that was received within the fund that's being appropriated towards programs. Looking at the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it's up 126,000 from the prior year. This is tied to the housing in Lufi that was brought to you on April 30 for discussion and ordinance. If this fee is not approved, this appropriation would also be reduced because this appropriation is reflecting 50% of a housing analyst that was on that staff report to be appropriated for. Looking at the low-end income housing fund, it's down 672,000. Again, this is revenue-driven, since the GSA loan repayment is less for 19-20, so is the 20% that's being transferred into this fund for appropriation. Finally, looking at the capital improvement fund, it's down 6.5 million. There's less projects appropriated for 19-20. There was three big projects that were appropriated in the prior year that are not appropriated, they're not annual projects, they were one-time in nature, and so you're seeing a decrease of 6.5 million. Total budget for community development proposed 19-20 is 60.1 million, or almost $6 million less than what it was last year. Moving to community services and parks, total budget is 34.8 million. 18.5 of that is in the salaries and benefits category. 13.6 of it is in M&amp;O. 2.6 of it is in capital improvement. There are 97.20 full-time positions budgeted and 171.7 hourly FDEs. Community Services Parks has a lot of seasonal employees that are hourly, for example, lifeguards during the summer, and that's why we're seeing a large hourly FDE equivalent in this department, and it's natural for their operation. Looking at the departmental highlights, we can, there's Duke Magian Nature Education Center, finalizing joint use agreements with Glendale Unified School District for Wilson and Cerritos Multi-Use Fields and Glendale High School Tennis Courts, as well as securing Los Angeles County Measure A and State of California Prop 68 Funds for Park Development. Looking at their appropriations by fund, 16.8 million is proposed for the 19-20 general fund budget, up almost 4.1, and as previously mentioned, it's almost an entirely due to the recreation fund collapsing into the general fund from the special revenue funds. CDBG has a slight increase. Again, these funds are grant funds and are revenue-driven, so when the revenue goes up, more can be programmed towards programs, and that's what you're seeing here. Continuum of Care and the Emergency Solution Grants, both are funds that address homeless needs in Glendale, and their appropriations are reflective of the revenues we're receiving for 19-20. Looking at Fund 206, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Fund, it's up 624,000. And again, this is because more revenue is being received that can go towards job training abilities in Glendale. Looking at the Glendale Youth Alliance Fund, again, this is a fund that supports youth employment programs in Glendale, and it's up 393,000 based on program revenues. Looking at the, some of the other major increases and decreases, capital improvement fund is down 3.6 million. is down three points six million, less capital is being appropriated towards projects in nineteen twenty, as well as the Parks Mitigation Fee Fund being down by seven fifty, seven fifty for the same reason. Total appropriation is thirty-four point seven million for nineteen twenty, or almost two point eight million dollars less than what it was last year.
Quick question. So this thirty-four million dollars include all the grants that we receive from different sources?
Yes, Mayor Najarian, members of council, Councilmember Garbadeen, that's correct. This thirty-four million is inclusive of all grants that we're receiving for these Fire Department, total proposed budget is seventy-one point two million for nineteen twenty, fifty-nine point six of it is in the salaries and benefits category, ten point four of it is in M and O, three hundred and five thousand in capital outlay, eight hundred and fifty thousand in capital improvement. There are two hundred and twelve positions budgeted full-time in Fire Department, forty point four hourly full-time equivalents. Some of the departmental highlights include a firefighter recruit academy, as well as two new, two new engines. The general fund Fire Department budget is proposed for nineteen twenty is sixty-two point two million, or two point seven million dollars more than what it was last year. About half of that is attributable to the Fire Academy. Hazardous Disposal Fund, up slightly for forty-five thousand, strictly salaries and benefit increases. Looking at Slide Thirty-Eight, Fire Grant Fund, this is based on any grant revenue that's anticipated for fire, and there aren't any for nineteen twenty, so there's no appropriation being reflected. Fire Mutual Aid Funds, reflecting a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase from prior year, and this is because we expect more mutual aid reimbursement for nineteen twenty. Looking at the Capital Improvement Fund, it's up eight hundred thousand from prior, prior year due to two major projects being budgeted for nineteen twenty, and they include the Fire Station Twenty-Six, two hundred thousand dollars. It's a reconstruction of Fire Station Twenty-Six and Fire Station Twenty-Eight for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Looking at Redigo Communications, one point seven million dollar decrease, this is, as previously mentioned, a decrease in capital outlay purchases for nineteen twenty.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
On the Special Events Fund, on the Special Events Fund for Fire, I noticed that there's nothing proposed for twenty nineteen, twenty, nineteen twenty. Can you explain that? Not doing any events, or is that just a?
Funds collapsing.
Funds collapsing. Oh.
So that's one of the funds that is collapsing into the general fund.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. Thank you. So any events that they have will come out of the general fund?
Correct. So the revenues will come into the general fund, and it'll be paid out of the general fund. Looking at Glendale Water and Power, the total budget proposed for nineteen twenty is three hundred and seventy point two million, forty-nine point six of it is for salaries and benefits, two hundred and sixty-three point nine is for M and O, almost four million in capital outlay, thirty-two point four in capital improvement, and twenty point two seven for the transfer from the G W P funds into the general fund. Looking at their personnel, full-time position count, three hundred and nineteen full-time positions, twenty-four point thirty-eight hourly full-time equivalent positions. Some departmental highlights for G W P include analyze and develop a new sustainability division section in the city, initiate and complete an electrical services master plan, upgrade water A M I to a new I P base system, and lay the groundwork for supporting new citywide smart city technologies, and finally, implement new and augment existing clean energy programs, including demand response, energy efficiency, and solar programs. Looking at Slide Forty-One, Electric Public Benefits Fund has a decrease of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. This is due to I S D service charge and the building maintenance service charge being less for nineteen twenty. Finally, we have, excuse me, next, we have the Fire Optic Fund. It's a brand-new fund, it has an appropriation of two hundred and twenty thousand for projects, new projects within G W P. Looking at the Electric Works Revenue Fund, there's twenty-four point four million dollar increase over last year. This is primarily due to purchased power. And looking at the Depreciation Fund, increase of eight point three over last year, this is due to project appropriation, being eight point three dollars more than it was last year. Jumping down to the bottom of the page, for the Waterworks Revenue Fund, we're seeing one point four million dollar increase in that due to interest on the bonds, on the water bonds, as well as cost allocation charges from, from the general fund, and three point two million dollar increase in the Water Depreciation Fund due to new project appropriation. The total budget proposed for nineteen twenty, three seventy point two, or almost thirty, thirty-seven point four million dollars more than what it was last year.
Good question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So the Public Benefit Fund, is this the fund that we subsidize for, portion of it goes to the solar programs that we have?
Yes.
The same entire, entire amount? Or what is the, and portion of it is the break for seniors and?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Garbadeen, that is correct. All of those things are included in there. So it's the solar rebate program, it's the subsidy program for low-income and seniors, along with a variety of other programs that we show you each, every two years, we do a budget. So this year, last year was the year we did the budget, this year we don't have the specific budget. Council approves a two-year budget for those programs. So it's everything from rebates for, for Energy Smart, appliances, home evaluations, thermostats, those kind of things.
Okay, because I was looking at our general fund transfer, which is twenty million, we also do ten million dollars in public benefit funds, which is half of that, that general fund transfer, almost. Okay, thank you.
Looking at the Human Resources Budget, the total budget proposed as a part of the nineteen twenty budget is fifty-two point five million, four point six of that is in salaries and benefits, while forty-seven point eight of that is in M and O, and this is because majority of our I S F funds, internal service funds, are housed in the Human Resources Department. There's twenty-two point ninety-five full-time positions and three point three eight hourly full-time equivalents in the Human Resources Department. Some of the departmental highlights for H R include complete M O U negotiations with I B E W, Local Eighteen, G P O A, and G M A Police Managers, commence M O U negotiations with the G C E A and G M A, and to continue work on the E R P system through coordination with Finance and Information Services. Looking at the General Fund Budget for H R, the proposed budget is one hundred and eighteen thousand, less than what it was last year. This is primarily due to reductions in contractual services for nineteen twenty. The Unemployment Insurance Fund is down six hundred and seventy-four thousand. There was a one-time transfer in this fund last year of about seven hundred thousand dollars that went into the Workers' Comp, Workers' Comp Fund, based on the health of the Unemployment Insurance Fund. The money was redirected to a fund that needed it. Slide Forty-four, looking at the Compensation Insurance Fund, it's up six hundred and thirty-four thousand from last year due, due to the excess liability insurance premium costs going up, as well as the cost allocation charges for nineteen twenty. Dental Insurance reflects a five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar decrease. Again, there was a one-time transfer of six hundred thousand dollars budgeted last year towards the Medical Insurance Fund that's not recurring. Looking at the Vision Insurance Fund, had a two hundred and forty-one thousand dollar decrease. Again, there was a one-time transfer of two hundred and fifty thousand last year budgeted to be transferred to the Medical Insurance Fund, to, to help keep the cost neutral on the Medical Insurance Fund to the general fund via the rates going back. Looking at the total budget for nineteen twenty for H R, fifty-two point five million, or almost eight hundred and nineteen thousand less than what it was last year. Moving on to I S D, a total budget proposed for nineteen twenty is twenty-four point four million, seven point three of that is in salaries and benefits, fourteen point nine of it is in M and O, while there's two point two almost in capital outlay. There are forty-two full-time positions in, in I S D, four point nine seventy hourly full-time equivalents. Departmental highlights include enterprise-wide Windows Ten deployment and continued implementation of the Glendale Fire Department Redigo Data Network for the CAD upgrade, implementation of the Police CAD Dispatch System and Public Works Mobile Field Inspections, to issue an R F P for the land management system, installation of generator redundant activity at Adams Hill Radio Site, update of all the I S D department job classifications. Looking at the appropriations by fund, all of these funds in I S D reflect less appropriation compared to last year due to less capital purchases, less projects in these funds, and in particular for the I S D Wireless Fund, less radios being purchased for Fire and G P D. Total budget proposed, twenty-four point four, or almost five point four less than what it was last year. We have Jason Bradford, our Chief Information Officer, here for a brief look at their proposed budget.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, if I may, before Mr. Bradford delves into the organizational structure, as you know, he was appointed a little over a year ago to be our C I O, and in this timeframe, he's had the opportunity to really look at the department and its structure, and the classifications within the I T department, and what that looks like in today's standards. And we have some, some slides, and he will take you through this journey of what he's looked at and what we ought to look like into the future as part of this budget, and we wanted to bring very specific attention to that as, as we move along. With that, Mr. Bradford.
Thank you, Yasmin. Good morning, Mayor Najarian, members of the council. As Audrinne mentioned on a previous slide, in the proposed I S D budget is, does include an update of our job specifications. By way of background, as you know, one of our core missions is to modernize R and T environment that can be leveraged by city departments and ultimately our residents, and we've actually started to do this. We want to develop an infrastructure that is flexible, redundant, highly available, scalable, secure, and really leverages an appropriate mix of on-premises solutions and cloud-hosted services. We also need to take advantage of new applications, technologies, and software that really makes a difference in how we conduct our business and ultimately serve our residents. One of the key areas that we haven't done is modernize our job classifications. The key to taking advantage of all these new technologies and modernization is making sure we've got the right people with the right skill sets. It's super important in the I T world. So this probably comes as no surprise, and certainly Glendale is no exception, recruitment and retention for qualified I T personnel has been and continues to be problematic. Why is that? Well, certainly, it's a competitive job market for I T skills. We're becoming more digital, more mobile, and as technologies continue to evolve, the demand in the marketplace for qualified I T individuals continues to increase. The other thing is, I've got, we have some outdated job specifications that need to be updated. I'm not going to go through every job specification that, that needs updating, but I just want to give you a smattering of some of the things that are still in our job descriptions. For example, we are still looking for Cobalt programmers, and I took that in college a while ago. That'd be great if I was a financial institution in the nineteen eighties. It's just, it's really outdated. Degree in Data Processing, which would be great if we still had a mainframe. We have language in there that says ability to use computer equipment. That's just not going to be good enough to attract qualified candidates, so.
I could maybe apply for that one. Just, just saying.
Fair enough. So obviously, it's difficult to attract qualified candidates, and, I mean, I, I'm never going to compete with the private sector, but even, I'm just not competitive with other government agencies at this particular juncture. So to address these issues, ongoing recruitment and retention issues, the following is included in the proposed fiscal year nineteen twenty I S D budget. I need to first update several classifications and salary ranges based on industry standards. So the system analyst function needs to be updated to the system engineer and modernized, and we need to create a series. I've got an I S Project Manager job title that is frankly outdated and needs to really reflect modern job descriptions and what the people are actually doing, and also so I can recruit properly. And my senior security system managers needs to be converted to a network manager. Accordingly, I also need to adjust salary ranges for the existing job classifications, the Senior P C Specialist Supervisor, the I T Infrastructure Manager, the I T Applications Manager, the Wireless Systems Manager, and the Assistant C I O. I should note that the authorized headcount for I S D remains the same. There's no increase in headcount. The cost of the proposed restructuring is included in my proposed budget for your consideration. It is three hundred and ninety thousand, and is funded in the I S D Internal Service Fund. Just a couple of notes about that. Costs will be phased in during the fiscal year, so it's, it's likely I would spend roughly seventy percent of that. It's going to take some time to put this into place, so we'd be looking at around two hundred and seventy thousand. And it's also going to be funded through a combination of attrition through future retirements and position downgrades as they become vacant. So in, in conclusion, it's certainly my responsibility as the Chief Information Officer in the city to bring new technologies into the city, but I also have to make sure my job specifications are current and modern, and that I can compete in the marketplace. And what this really allows me to do is set the foundation for not only now, but going into the future. It also allows me to keep the people I need to keep, and also get or recruit the people I need to recruit. So with that, thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions before we move on.
I have a question. Who, I understand your dilemma. Who sets the salary ranges? Is it council, or is it Civil Service Commission, or is it Human Resources?
That, that would come before council as part of the budget adoption process. We would make a recommendation for the, what we feel is the appropriate salary range. I can tell you, Mr. Doyle and I reviewed these, and the salary ranges we'll be bringing to recommend for council approvals, we've reviewed them, and we do believe they are at market rate, competitive with other government agencies.
So these recruitment, these job descriptions that are obsolete and outdated, as they're updated, that goes to human?
Correct.
I mean, that goes to civil service?
Yes, that is correct.
So salaries are set by the City Council by way of a salary ordinance, and as part of the budget process on an annual basis, you will receive a salary ordinance as part of the adoption process. In no way did we want to surprise you with these at the hearing and/or adoption, and wanted to bring light in terms of, of these significant changes within I S D, again, bringing us to, to twenty twenty standards and, and out of the nineteen eighties.
I have a question.
Mr. Mayor.
Do we have currently employees that can fill these new titled positions? You mentioned recruitment. Is the recruitment going to be through attrition, or you're saying you're not going to increase the number of employees, staff?
That is correct. Councilmember Devine, members of the council, currently, this reorganization represents sixteen current positions. I have twelve filled positions, I have four vacancies, so we would need to go to recruitment.
I, I'm sorry, but I, I want to go back, Audrinne, to, and it just just occurred to me as that we were moving on, in the Glendale Water and Power Proposed Budget Summary.
Yes.
I just want to ask, in the departmental highlights, we're looking at a new sustainability division section. Is that, are those salaries, or is that cost included in the budget that's, you know, is at three hundred and seven million dollars?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Devine, yes. The initial cost estimates, so we're bringing onboard a consultant that will do an evaluation analysis and develop a structure, that's all included in the budget. Anything from there on, if their recommendation is we have a full-time employee, or that's the decision we make, that would be subsequent budgets that we would put that into.
Okay, so it's, that's not?
This is just the development phase, but it is included in the budget to cover those costs.
Okay, right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Since you are here.
Yes, sir.
On the same page of forty, it says transfers, this is, I mean, these are the transfers from?
The Electric Fund into the General Fund.
The General Fund.
Correct.
Like every year.
Correct.
So we are not giving up? Same amount?
It's actually less, it's actually less. The total dollar amount is less because we pay it at ten percent, so as, as, as our costs rise, then you can lower the, the transfer, but it's, it's actually less than it was last year. I don't know.
That's maybe like two thousand, two million less.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Not much, seven hundred and fifty thousand in the greater scope, but it is less.
I just want to ask our City Attorney, that, so we went to court. Now, what's going to happen with these transfers?
We, members of council, Councilmember Garbadeen, I don't want to get into too much detail, because we're going to the second phase, but, but it is, it's set for trial later this year to resolve the, the issues that the Court of Appeal left open for the trial court. So we'll have more information. I can always brief the council in closed session if you'd like, but we have a trial later this year to resolve those issues further.
So, I don't know if can I, I can ask, or it will go to that closed session, but for years, at least since two thousand and fourteen is the issue, right? The transfer since two thousand?
That's when the litigation was brought, yes, sir.
So every year, we are transferring twenty, we transfer twenty million, and we are continuing doing that, so it will be over a hundred million dollars.
Right, but the Court of Appeal ruled that the Right, but the Court of Appeal ruled that the transfer itself is not the tax and so reverse the court, the trial court's decision on that basis. And we have to go back and determine what, how much that transfer increased since 2010 as a percentage of revenues, because that's the test and that's sort of the detail that I have to get into with you once again in closed session if you'd like.
And if it pleases the council, we can place this on a closed session agenda in the next couple of weeks.
All right. Thank you.
Looking at the innovation performance and audit department dashboards, 1.4 million is budgeted for 1920, 1.2 of that is in salaries and benefits, 156,000 is in M&amp;O. There are six full-time positions in IPA department, one hourly full-time equivalent. Departmental highlights include modernizing city processes, digital recruitment, procurement opportunities, building tenant pipeline, succession planning, building inspection trainee program, as well as automating audits, unauthorized system access and vendor payments in particular to be looked at. Looking at the general fund budget for IPA, it's 1.4 million proposed, slightly down due to reductions in hourly wages. Looking at library arts and culture, 11.7 million proposed budget for 1920, 7.7 of that is in salaries and benefits, 3.9 almost is in M&amp;O, 100,000 for capital. There are 46 full-time positions in the library department, 28.8 hourly full-time equivalents. Departmental highlights include Montrose Library remodel, library cards for all GUSD students, as well as addition of digital magazines. Looking at the library fund, 11 million is budgeted in the general fund, 445,000 of that is an increase over last year. Urban Art Fund, this fund houses the art fees collected from city development. There's $269,000 budgeted for 1920. The library fund, which is grant-driven from federal, state, and local grants for library services, is up 96.4,000 over last year. And then looking at the capital improvement fund, there is $100,000 budgeted for branch libraries. So total proposed budget for libraries, arts, and culture is 11.7 million or 821,000 more than what it was last year. Looking at?
Yes, Mr. Bradford. The urban art fund, this is the, basically the development impact piece for arts, right, that we collect. What is the balance of that fund? Is it, how much do we have, five, six million dollars? And we are appropriating 269,000 for different projects?
Yes.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, councilmember Garpetian. That, in January, we came to council with a work plan after the urban arts program plan, so that was approved at that time, this expenditure. And that is, at this point, the total fund is about 7.5 million.
7.5, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. That's not, it's not, it's, I'm going back again.
No worries.
You know, it's early in the morning for me, so I'm a little bit slow on the uptake, but I want to go back to the innovation performance and audit proposed budget. Salaries and benefits, 1.2 million for six people. And I'm looking at other departments that have this number of people, staff, and they're not nearly this high, 1.2 million. Is that, is there a reason that the salaries are that high in?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Ms. Baboyan is here to answer any questions, but I will say initially, based on the makeup of this department, if you remember, the audit team is also part of this department and you have a number of individuals within that group that, you have an audit manager, principal auditors, et cetera, and Ms. Baboyan can cover that piece with you. And you have the director as Ms. Baboyan and one full-time employee within IPA specific, the performance piece and the innovation piece, the rest are in audit. But why don't you go ahead and cover that?
Yeah, just adding to that, we did inherit the internal audit division, and so with that came management-level employees who are at a higher level. And so currently, we don't have any non-management employees. How we supplement our staff is through hourly interns that we rotate on a regular basis. And so the incremental addition you saw was basically just one new headcount, which was an innovation project manager. But essentially, it's internal audit. The city auditor was replaced with my position and just the addition of one full-time project manager.
So all of the six full-time employees are at the management level?
Correct.
Thank you.
Looking on slide 56, looking at the management services budget. Total proposed budget for 1920, 6.1 million, 4.5 of that is in salaries and benefits, while 1.4 of that is in M&amp;O and 175 for capital improvement. There are 23 full-time positions in the management services office, 5.15 hourly full-time equivalents. Some other departmental highlights include upgrades and improvements to the city's government access channel facilities, inclusive of upgrades to the city council chambers and planning hearing rooms, and some other strategy and implement tools to enable live broadcasting of community events from remote locations as part of the city's ongoing effort to engage and inform the community at large. And finally, upgrade the city's website layout to improve search functions and enhance the user's experience. Looking at the budget for management services by fund, general fund, 5.9 million proposed for 1920. It's up 1.3 primarily because of the filming funds collapsing into the general fund and being shifted from various departments into management services. And the cable access fund is down 675,000 compared to 1920 because of less projects towards GTV6 improvements. As mentioned before, 6.13 proposed 1920 budget or just 45,000 more than what it was last year. Looking at the police department, total budget proposed for 1920, 97.2 million, 77.5 of that is in salaries and benefits, 18 million is in M&amp;O, and 1.7 is in capital outlay. There are 338.5 full-time positions in the police department, 12.63 hourly full-time equivalents. Some departmental highlights include transition of the parking enforcement function, evaluation of unmanned aerial systems for public safety purposes, upgrade in-car video and mobile digital computer technology, and finally, mental and homeless outreach. Looking at the general fund proposed budget for the police department, it's up 1.7 million from prior year, as mentioned before, primarily due to salaries and benefits, as well as some increases in the utilities cost. Looking at the asset forfeiture fund, it's down in appropriation by almost 190.7,000. Looking at the police special grant fund, it's up 144,000 over last year. This is grant-driven, so as grant revenue comes in, the appropriation increases within this fund. Looking at the police building project fund, there is an almost $461,000 increase over last year. This is the COPs, it's the interest on the bonds, and as mentioned previously, this will become less of a fluctuation going forward since we are now on a fixed-rate basis. Looking at the joint helicopter operation fund, there's an increase of almost 1.7 million. This is due to a purchase of a helicopter. It reflects 50% of the costs since the other 50% of the helicopter is paid for by the City of Burbank. Looking at the total budget, 97.3 proposed, two and a half increase over last year. Moving on to public works, total proposed budget for 1920, 151.6 million, 34.6 of it is in salaries and benefits, 87.9 is in M&amp;O, 5.9 is in capital outlay, 21.8 is in capital improvement, and 1.1 is in the transfers category. Looking at the position count, there are 285.5 positions in, full-time positions in public works, 26.9 in hourly full-time equivalents. Looking at the departmental highlights, there's Fire Station 28 reconstruction project, Locker Center Avenue rehabilitation project, and pavement repair and rehabilitation program Phase 1 is highlighted for 1920. General fund budget for public works is 15 million, 15.1 million. It's down 144,000 as we sat study session one, mainly due to shifting of personnel from the general fund into other enterprise funds that these personnel work on. The parking fund, as previously mentioned, is up 4.2 million. This is again, the new contract, as well as the marketplace garage and the civic center parking garage improvements that are planned for 1920. Looking at the rest of the funds for public works, these are revenue-driven funds, and so when the revenue in these grants increases, so do the appropriations. And where you're seeing decreases from prior year across the board is a reflection of less projects within these funds being appropriated. So the total budget for public works is 151.6 million, 6.2 decrease over last year, mainly due to just grant revenue fluctuations. Slide 64 is a recap of our authorized full-time position count going back to 2006 and 2007. The proposed 1920 position count is 1,579 positions, full-time positions proposed. This concludes the departmental dashboards component of the study session. The next phase is the projects, capital improvement program, and we've divided a section into projects that have multiple sources of funding and projects that are single source-funded. This is to keep the projects that have multiple sources in one place so that we're not having to see the same project repeat across different funds.
Let me interrupt you just for a moment. If you can go back to slide 63. The Measure R local return and the Measure R regional fund. Don't we get an annual?
The mayor, members of the city council, that's absolutely correct. We get an annual allocation, but for the fiscal year 1920, we will be processing several funding agreements with Metro. So Metro's policy is unless we have funding agreements in place and executed, we cannot be programming projects. So although we get the revenue, this just reflects what's programmed for next year. So come 2021, you will see a much larger appropriation because several of these projects will be in construction.
Okay, and then how about Measure M? We have Measure M funding too, don't we?
Yes.
Is that, was that in?
It's the similar process as Measure R.
Oh, I see.
It's the previous page.
Okay. One other question, sorry, before you get on to that. Let's go back to economic development. Why is the M&amp;O so high in economic development? I'm not sure what slide that was.
It's not economic development, it's community development as a whole. And it's funny because I was texting Mr. Lands of Fame.
It's like 40-some million and?
Of which $33 million of it is for Section 8. And so economic development wishes they had that kind of money.
Say.
They'd be doing the economic development dance if that money was in place, but it's Section 8 about to program, et cetera.
All right, thank you.
Looking at capital improvement projects with multiple funding sources, the first project on our list is the B-line maintenance and operation project. This is basically the B-line facility that's being built, has, it's both federally funded and it's Metro-funded. And there was 20.9 million appropriated toward this project, there is $3.6 million remaining on it. Duque Magie Nature Education Center has $3 million budgeted, 1.6 remaining. And Fitness in the Park, which is, is the purchase and installation of outdoor fitness equipment at the Glendale Heritage Garden, as well as the Adult Recreation Center, and some indoor fitness at the Pacific Community Center, has 195,000 budgeted and all 195,000 is remaining. There is no new appropriation for these projects proposed for 1920, but they are active projects that we are working on and we wanted to reflect them on our presentation. Slide 67, Fremont Park renovation. The master plan for their Fremont Park renovation was approved in December 2015. It includes a new artificial turf, soccer field, new playgrounds, splash pad, and community building. And so thus far, 11.6 million has been appropriated for this project, 10.6 million is remaining, and no new appropriation is proposed for 1920. Looking at the Glendale High Tennis Court renovation, this is a six tennis courts that are jointly funded, and a jointly funded restroom to be used by Glendale Unified School District and the city. Thus far, 1.1 million has been budgeted, 839,000 is remaining, and there's no new appropriation for 1920 proposed. Glendale Subregional Traffic Management Center, 696,000 appropriated, 692,000 remaining, and nothing proposed. Slide 68, Howard Building Tenant Improvement. This is a brand-new project to be funded by Glendale Water and Power Electric and Water Depreciation Funds, $150,000 proposed for 1920. Grandview-Sonora Railroad Crossing, this is safety enhancements at Grandview and Sonora at grade railroad crossing, 6.7 million appropriated to date, 434,000 remaining. Train station, first-last mile, this is wayfinding, pedestrian, high-visibility crosswalks, bus stop and shelter improvements in and around the Larry Zarian Transportation Center, 3.4 million appropriated, 3.3 million remaining. Vertigo Park North Community Building, that's 2.5 million appropriated, 2.4 million remaining. New telephone system, 450,000 appropriated, 442 remaining. Pacific Park Playground and Pool Shade Structure, 240 appropriated, 137 remaining, and none of these projects have a proposed appropriation for 1920. Looking at Pacific Park Artificial Turf, this is the multipurpose field, it's a baseball slash soccer field, and it's 740,000 appropriated so far, and none of it has been expensed, and another 1.1 million is being proposed for 1920. Pacific Park Splash Pad, 734,000 appropriated, 719 remaining. Pennsylvania Avenue Rehabilitation Project, 3 million appropriated, about 489 remaining, and nothing proposed for 1920. Regional Arterial Traffic Performance Measurement System, 631,000 appropriated, all 631 is remaining. And Safe Roots to School, 3.2 appropriated, 396 remaining, and another 132,000 is proposed for 1920. That concludes the multi-funded projects. Now going into the single-funded projects. Hazardous Disposal Fund has Facility Renovation Grant, it's $50,000 for the appropriated thus far for improvements at the facilities, mostly repairing and striping of the drop-off driveway. So nothing appropriated for 1920. Parking Fund has a variety of projects. The ones I want to highlight are the ones that have appropriations for 1920. Parking Lot Meter Improvement, 300,000. Civic Center Parking Garage improvements for 750,000. And Elevator Improvements at the Marketplace Garage. This is a complete overhaul of all of the elevators, seismic retrofitting, and ADA compliance for 900,000. So total proposed for the Parking Fund, 1.9 million in 1920. Moving on to Measure W, this is the new measure that was approved in April for stormwater issues. It includes two projects for 1920 for a total of 630,000. The first one is for the Green Street Improvement Program, which includes buyer retention facilities and porous pavement structures, and an Edgewick Road watershed management. This is a street in Chevy Chase Canyon and a watershed is being proposed for a construction to minimize erosion and such. Measure R Regional Funds, 5.5 million being appropriated thus far, and 5.4 of that is remaining. There is no new budget proposed for 1920. Transit Prop C Local Return, 642,000 appropriated in various projects, 383,000 is remaining. The majority of that is in the GTC refurbishment project. Slide 75, Cable Access Fund, there's 850,000 appropriated in this fund from prior years, all 850 is remaining. It's in the GTV6 control room relocation, and another 175,000 appropriated this year 1920 for council chambers AC. Looking at the CIP General Fund, Fund 401, there's a variety of projects in here. The ones I want to highlight again are the ones that have 1920 proposed budget. So Branch Libraries, 100,000, this is for ongoing building maintenance and at the neighborhood libraries. Fire Station 26, 200,000. Fire Station 28, 650,000 reconstruction costs. Moving on to page, slide 76, ADA Facility Modifications, 125,000 budgeted for 1920. This is an annual project for ADA modifications across various locations. 200,000 budgeted for parks and anticipated repairs, this is just for any unforeseen repairs that come up in the various parks. Slide 77, MSP Tenant Improvements, 200,000 budgeted. Central Library Children's Room renovation, 100,000 proposed for 1920. Montrose Parking Lot and Electrical Upgrade, 625,000. Dunsmore Parking Lot Resurfacing, 500,000 proposed, and Sports Complex Field 3 Artificial Turf, 250,000 proposed for 1920. For a total of 2.9 million dollars proposed for 1920 in the General Fund CIP 401 budget. Looking at State Gas Tax Fund, there's also a few projects budgeted in this fund. Some of these projects are annual projects such as the sidewalk maintenance Some of these projects are annual projects such as the Sidewalk Maintenance Program, the Slurry Seal Maintenance Program, the Street Reconstruction Program. So we are only reflecting the appropriation for these within the last five years. The proposed 1920 budget for these, for the gutter construction program, is 470,000. For the sidewalk maintenance program is 480,000. Slurry Seal Maintenance Program, 400,000. Street Resurfacing, 470,000. And 865 for street resurfacing. Looking at some major ones on slide 78. 2.4 is budgeted for the Locustina Avenue Rehabilitation Project. 1 million for Maintenance District 9 Pavement Rehabilitation and 650 for the pavement management system. Total 29.1 has been budgeted in this fund, life-to-date. 7.4 of it is remaining as of 12/31 and 7.8 is proposed for 1920.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
This is probably an academic question, but one column is the remaining budget and then you have the proposed. So does that mean that the proposed budget has this extra funding? No, it's, the remaining budget has already been used, actually.
It's assumed to be used, correct?
So we're just moving on to the next...
New monies.
So it hasn't been used yet because it's remaining and we need an additional proposed budget to be able to finish the project.
Okay, so they will be combined, more or less?
Ultimately, yes.
Okay.
Slide 79, Parks Development Impact Fees Fund. There are no new appropriations proposed for this fund. There has been 13.5 almost million in appropriations towards various projects. 12.5 remaining. The most significant project in this fund includes the Wilson Middle School Multi-Use Field, which is artificial turf at the Wilson Middle School. Lighting, fencing, restrooms, parking, and such. And that has 4.8 million remaining as of six months into 1819. Looking at the CIP...
Let me interrupt the Wilson Middle School Multi-Use Field. Has that, where are we in that process? I mean, that...
Mayor and adjutant members of the council, we're currently finalizing the EIR. It's planning. And hopefully within the next couple of months, we'll have a community meeting for public review.
And do we have a joint? Have we worked out the joint use issues with the school board?
We're currently working on joint use agreements for both, all three projects. Ceritos Elementary Multi-Use Field, the Wilson Multi-Use Field, and Glendale High School Tennis Courts.
And isn't that price a little bit high? 5 million for the, I mean, I understand it was about $1 million for an artificial grass field.
The 5 million is A to Z. Project planning, the conceptual plan, the meetings. And also it includes a bathroom and storage building too. So it's not only a soccer field. It also provides, it will have a soccer, I'm sorry, bathroom.
Is this the entire cost of the project that we're bearing? Is the school participating?
School's not participating.
School is not?
No, they're just providing us the property.
So we get to use it on weekends or whatever?
The plan is that we use it nights and weekends, Monday through Friday after school, 5 to 10 p.m., Saturdays and Sundays, 8 a.m. to 10 p.m.
Okay, I know, I know this has been in the works for a while, but I guess when I was expecting the price tag to be a lot lower and was assuming there'd be some participation by the school district as well.
As of now, there's no participation. This was part of the...
Because my discussions and my comments, I've been saying, well, let's throw, let's contribute some, several millions for a swimming pool project, not realizing that we're putting 5 million in. And I'm not sure the school district appreciates all that. I mean, to be honest, we've had some issues previously and the general tone is that the school, is that the city isn't participating with the school or making any cooperative plans with them. So, okay, I mean, it's not really a question. It's just a, it's just a hmm moment that I'm having at this point. Especially in light of the last few months' issues and comments. Not all of them kind directed at council about some of our decisions and abandoning the schools and all that, so. No, I just, like I said, it's not a question, it's just a hmm moment. Yes, Mr. ...
So, Mr. Ulanikin. So is the price tag high? Is it any higher than it should be? Or, I don't know, what's the closest thing we compare it to?
This was the estimate. This was the estimate that was given to us in 2016 when the DIF plan was approved by council. So 5,050, I believe it's, it's the correct amount from start to finish, which includes the soft cost and the hard cost.
And I, I know that the pools are very important and there's a severe shortage of pools in Glendale. As you know, YWCA shut down theirs and we're desperately looking for more space because for children, especially after school programs, swimming programs, they're having to drive to Pasadena, to Rosebone also to utilize Burbank Pools. So we need that, but at the same time, I don't think, I need to impress upon you or anyone about how severe the shortage of soccer fields are. So I'm just saying, let's, let's stay on point. Whatever sentiments we may have about, we may or may not have about Glendale Unified Board, it's got to stay focused because we need to provide the green space as well as the pool space for our children and our residents. And if that, that means that we have to cooperate with the GUST, then that's great. Sounds good to me. Thank you, Mr. Ulanikin.
I have a, I have a question, if I may. On the Ceritos Elementary Multipurpose, it's, the budget is 3.2 million. And on this Wilson Multi-Use Field, it's almost 5 million. Is that because of the amount of space that, I mean, I know this, the Wilson Middle School is a huge property?
Mayor and adjutant members of the council, Councilmember Paula Devine. Ceritos is a smaller field. It will be a U-12 where Wilson will be a high school size field. Plus Wilson, like I mentioned earlier, also includes a bathroom. We will be using the existing bathroom at Ceritos, expanding it. So that's where the cost is. It's cheaper because of the size of the field.
Sure, thank you.
One more quick question. Wilson also has a practice field. It's not just a soccer field. There's a practice field as well, which is an extra field. Also, it has a track around the...
Both projects will have tracks.
Ceritos has the tracks.
Both tracks, yes.
Yes, it doesn't. So it has a track, it has two soccer fields, bathrooms, some shade areas.
Yes.
And the whole nine. Thank you.
Looking at the CIP Reimbursement Fund. This is all CIP projects that are grant-funded. We have Fire Department burn building is one of the bigger projects within this fund. 700,000 is appropriated and 394,000 is remaining. And the reason why it's in the CIP reimbursement fund is because GCC is funding this project. Looking at slide 80. Moving on to some of the bigger projects within the Sewer Fund, since the project listings are long. Chevy Chase Sewer Diversion Project, 23.6 million was appropriated. There's 2.1 million remaining and no new appropriations proposed for 1920. Emergency Sewer and Storm Drain Repair Program, 1.9 appropriated, 286 remaining. And another 1.6 is being requested and proposed as a part of the 1920 budget. Looking at slide 81. Again, some of the more significant projects in Hyperion Waste Water System, 25.7 appropriated, 1.8 remaining. And another 3.9 is being proposed for 1920. LA Glendale Water Reclamation Plant, 34.3 appropriated, 14.9 remaining. And another 5 million being proposed for 1920. And finally, Sewer Construction Program, 7.2 appropriated, 1.1 remaining. And 150,000 proposed for 1920. All in all, there's 106.7 million in appropriation within this fund. 23.4 of it is remaining unspent and 10.9 is being proposed for 1920. Looking at the Refuge Disposal Fund. There's one project being proposed for 1920.
Yes, Mr. ... On slide 81. The Hyperion Waste Water System and LA Glendale Water Reclamation Plant. I remember it was last year or so that we have this joint agreement with Los Angeles, but any improvement that has to be done, they will do the job, do the work and they bill us, basically. So it was about $10 million or so, $15 million a year ago that we had to come up with this money, basically overnight. So I want to mention that because these two items together is almost $60 million. So, so that's another issue that we have when we have a joint venture with another municipality that when they bring up this, these huge expenses, then all of a sudden we're scrambling to balance it in our budget. Thank you.
Looking at the Refuge Disposal Fund. The one project that has a 1920 proposed budget is the Automated Container Replacement Program. This program is for the systematic replacement of 5,000 automated containers and 100 metal refuse bins annually. There's $1 million appropriated thus far, 996,000 is remaining. And another 350,000 is proposed for 1920. Looking at the Electric Depreciation Fund. There is a long list of projects within this fund and they all center around specific units being replaced or upgraded. So I don't want to read off all of them, but the most significant one on slide 82 is the Unit 9 Modifications. 1.9 million is the appropriation thus far. There's 1.9 remaining, nothing proposed for 1920. Moving on to slide 83. The projects that have proposed 1920 budget include the Emergency System Improvement. 200,000 is proposed for 1920 and there's 639 remaining in the project. Feeder Conversion at Tropical Substation, 1.9 has been appropriated already. 259 is remaining, 800,000 is proposed for 1920. Fiber Plan Implementation, 2.3 appropriated, 132 remaining, 5.9 million proposed. Cable Replacements, 1.7 appropriated, 278 remaining and 500,000 is proposed. Deteriorated Pole Replacements, 1.5 appropriated, 459 remaining. And another 200,000 is being proposed as a part of the 1920 budget. Install Streetlights Annually, we have 310,000 that we've appropriated thus far. 205 is remaining and another 250 is proposed for 1920.
Question, does, so does this accounting comply with the court's instructions on how to identify the funds? These are the obsolete, the obsolete funding model or accounting models that they force us to...
Basically complying with GAAP and the Charter at the same time.
The cable replacements, is this electric cable we are talking about? What cable? Okay.
Yes, sir, electric cable. Underground and overhead.
All right. What's the reclosers?
These are just, these are component parts. These are all maintenance-type parts. Reclosers are part of the overall system. They're actually become very critical in outages as you close and then transfer power to another place. So, and we can remotely operate those, but many of ours are long past their, their life. So cable, poles, closers, these are all things that are routine maintenance replacements.
I knew that, I was just testing you. Thank you.
Continuing on, continuing on with the Electric Depreciation Fund. There's 200,000 proposed for 1920 for the transformer purchases. 300,000 proposed for transmission line insulator replacement. 300,000 for pole replacement for fiber. 350 for wildfire mitigation. And 300,000 for distribution expansion for current and anticipated load growth. Going, moving on to slide 85. Again, it's the continuation of the Electric Depreciation Fund. There are a lot of projects within this fund and most of them, as I mentioned, have a lot, very, very specific to certain units. But the most significant one that has an appropriation for 1920 is the OSIS Soft, OSI Soft PI Historian Enterprise. It's basically a system replacement and then Unit 5 Superheater Tube Replacement of 1 million and a half. And Unit 2 Turbine Generator overhaul, 2.9 million dollars. The total project appropriation over life-to-date budget for this fund is 43 million. 13.9 of that is remaining. And another 17.9, almost 18 million dollars is proposed for 1920. Looking at the Electric Customer Paid Capital Fund. There's 2 million appropriated with this, within this fund. 1.7 is remaining and another 2 million is proposed for 1920. This is based on customer needs. So when the project comes up that's customer-paid, this is the fund that we use to pay for, for electric. Moving on to slide 86, Water Depreciation Fund. This fund also has a lot of projects in it. The first one, AMI Modernization, 453,000 appropriated, 377 remaining. 1.6 proposed for 1920. Glorieta Wall Replacement in the middle of the page, 150 is appropriated, 50 is remaining. 850 is proposed for 1920. Potable Water Tank Rehab Program, 317 appropriated, 144 remaining. And another 350 is proposed for 1920. Looking at slide 87, Pipeline Management Program, 4.9 has been appropriated. 723,000 is remaining and another 4 million is being proposed for 1920. Potable Hydrants, 316 appropriated, 216 remaining, 150 being proposed. Pump Replacement Program, 500,000 appropriated, 491 remaining. 1.2 almost being requested for 1920. And then site repairs at various locations, 1.3 million appropriated, 281 remaining. And another 250 is being proposed for 1920. Moving on to slide 88, Continuation of the Water Depreciation Fund Projects. Valve Replacement, 1.6 almost appropriated, 199 remaining. 350 being proposed for 1920. Facility Security and Landscape, 300 appropriated, all 300 is remaining. And 240 is being proposed for 1920. Water System Optimization, 500 appropriated, 500 remaining. 1 million proposed. Backup Power Program, 400,000 proposed. Water Quality Enhancements Program, 200,000 proposed. And Wood Replacement Program, 200,000 proposed. 18.2 million in projects within this fund, 7.7 remaining. And another 10.8 is being proposed as a part of the 1920 budget. And on the water side, for the Customer Paid Capital, 1.4 was appropriated previously. 1.1 is being remaining. 1 and 1/2 is being proposed for 1920. Looking at the Fleet Management Fund. There are a few projects within this fund. The ones that have a 1920 proposed budget include the Underground Storage Tank Removal, 200,000 dollars, and Mobile CNG Fueling Station for 50,000. Within this fund, thus far, there has been 771,000 in appropriations. 745,000 of it is remaining and another 250 is requested for 1920. Looking at the ISD Infrastructure Fund. There is no proposed appropriation for 1920 and all of these projects that are listed have started a while back and there's 1.4 million appropriated thus far and there's 294,000 remaining. The majority of that is in the Disaster Recovery Site project. Doing a recap of the total 1920 Capital Improvement Program. 350,000 is proposed for CDBG Fund. 1.9 in the Parking Fund. 630,000 for Measure W Fund. 132 in the Measure M Local Return Fund. 175,000 in the Cable Access Fund. 2.9 in the General Fund Fund 401. 7.8 in State Gas Tax. 750,000 in Development Impact Fee from Parks. 10.9 in the Sewer Fund. 350,000 in the Refuge Disposal Fund. 20.1 in the Electric Utility Fund. 12.3 in the Water Utility Fund. And another 250 in the Fleet Fund. For a total proposed Capital Improvement Program Budget of 58.8 almost in 1920.
As Mrs. Cyan, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Arne, is the 132,000 Measure M Local Return Fund the only Measure M funds that we receive?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilman Senanian. This is only the local return. So there's a regional, which is a much greater number that we receive on an annual basis.
How much is it approximately?
$3 million, 3 to 4 million.
And how much do we pay into Measure M? What's the estimate?
The Measure M is the additional half-cent sales tax.
And what's, I mean, we track that number, right?
Right, we do, and...
20 million.
Yes, $20 million. So each quarter percent is $10 million for us in terms of sales tax.
Half a cent.
So it's $20 million?
I don't know, I'm not sure how much it is for this measure.
That we receive, or we pay?
What Measure M generates from Glendale?
Staff is looking it up. But in terms of sales tax, that, I'm sorry, I was answering the question, in terms of quarter percent is, as you know, $10 million. But in terms of what we receive?
What we receive is $4 million.
And what is produced, what we pay?
Approximately $20 million.
$20 million, so you said three and a half?
Three to four million a year.
Okay. So it's about 25% of what we generate.
Approximately.
But that's in direct cash back to the city.
Exactly.
That doesn't include the other funding for buses, or the BRT program, or the other things. Programmed, doesn't include program.
Regional programs.
All right, I'm just, since Glendale's not included in any of the Measure M's itemized projects...
No, the BRT is.
Even assume even, the BRT is, and how much is the...
That's a $250 million program.
Okay. Well, that's the project that is coming?
That's the BRT that's funded.
You know how to pass it.
Right. So obviously, that's shared with other cities, as seen in Burbank, and us. We have to pick the route, I mean, that's, it's not coming yet. We have to finish the EIR process, but the money is, is there in the ZIR.
Okay. You were saying something.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, before we, as we move on to the, to the next slide, which is slide 91, typically, we give you what we look like in terms of outgoing years for capital improvement. We've never done a completed capital improvement project list for the council to be able to see the number of projects that have been completed in the last year, and for you to take, to take a bow in terms of the program that you have set forward and the staff has implemented. These are just a few highlights of those projects, and Ms. Sayen will, will cover those highlights with you.
So the first project on our list is the bicycle facilities Phase 2. That's a completed project. City Hall MSB GSP roofing system restoration, Doran Broadway Brazil upgrade improvements is another project that was completed. Emergency sewers, storm drain repair, Phase 1. ADA curb ramp improvements project. Glendale Narrows Riverwalk and Bike Way culvert project, Phase 2, was completed. The Glendale Police Museum project was completed. Glendale Police tenant improvements, Hoover Toll Couple Chevy Chase Safe Roots to School project was completed. Illuminated street sign replacement Phases 2 and 3 have been completed. Kenneth Road rehabilitation. Municipal services building exterior protective coatings project. Ocean View Boulevard rehabilitation, Pencil Avenue rehabilitation have been completed. SB 1 Doran Street rehabilitation project has been completed. Tenant improvements and water feature renovation at Perkins. Traffic signals at Glendale Locker Center and Central. Western Avenue and Riverside Drive rehab project have been completed, and that's a two-page list of all the wonderful things that have happened in our city in the last year or so.
What happened with City Hall space in front of this building? Are we going to do anything?
Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council, Councilmember Agajanian. Yes, if you may, well, evidently you do recall, the bids came in extremely high, higher, much higher than we anticipated, so we are in the process of adding some scope to the work and seeking out contractors that have the specialties, because the stairs and the tiles around it have deemed somewhat historical, so we need to, to find some contractors who have the experience, expertise, and the specialty work that they can do. But it's not forgotten, it's in the works, we're just modifying the bid specs. So you will see it in front of you in the near future.
Mr. Sen.
Can you refresh my memory as to what the bicycle facilities Phase 2 was?
It's primarily, I, though, Councilmember Senanian, although it's called bicycle facilities, it's primarily referred to sheroes, bike lanes, striping throughout the city. It's not necessarily bicycle-related, but cycling.
Got it. Okay, and I have a question since we're on it about Cumberland. We repaved most of Cumberland in Northwest, but apparently two blocks, two blocks east of Grandview, we did not repave. This is according to the residents, and I'm wondering why.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council, Councilman Senanian, we get asked that question frequently, but we have a program in place. If we had unlimited funding, we could pave all the streets in Glendale every year. Right. But due to the limited funding, we have to be strategic about where we spend these, these monies. So we have to repave or reconstruct streets within given blocks, and depending on what the pavement conditions are. So when a street warrants a reconstruction or resurfacing, the adjacent blocks may warrant slurry sealing or other kinds of treatment.
That's exactly what happened. Those two blocks got slurry sealing, and that's exactly what I answered the residents, but I just wanted to confirm that.
Very good answer.
I assume it's just a matter of funding, there is a...
Matter of funding and payment condition, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. On to the last section of the presentation, which is talking about our fees for the year. To remind everybody, back in 2010, the state passed Proposition 26, which basically put more restrictions on fees than we had previously had. Now, a fee is defined as a fee if it meets one of these seven exceptions. First one being a specific benefit slash privilege, which is, an example of that would be a permit, or a specific service or product that's presented to the user, for example, a utility charge or a park and rec fee. Number three, a reasonable regulatory fee for licenses and permits. Fee for entry, use, or a purchase of government property such as entering a park or rec facility, equipment rentals. Number five would be fines or penalties. Number six, fees imposed as a condition of property development. And number seven would be assessment and property-related fees. So if a fee does not fall into one of these categories, it would then be defined as a tax, and that's why, that's, these are pretty much the guidelines that we utilize when we're, we're going through the fee study. So user fees, that's a fee charged to an individual or group that receives, receives a private benefit for the services that are provided by the city. It's not considered a tax, it's usually discretionary, and that's requested by the payer. So if the fee does not, if the fee doesn't cover the full cost that's charged, the full cost from the city side, then basically what happens is it's subsidized through the general fund taxes to be able to, to pay for that fee. The fee schedule that you have in front of you is the proposed fee schedule. It is the document that we publish on the city's website, so you have it in hard copy that you can follow along as we go through this. It's color-coded, so we have different categories that we're going to be talking about, so hopefully that's an easy reference for you. If you have any questions, we can go through that. But just another reminder here, this slide shows the, the way that the fees are pretty much determined, where if it's 100% private benefit, then we utilize that as a user fee. There could be some public benefit or some private benefit, and that's where the supplement of the general fund taxes would come into play. And if it's 100% public benefit, such as our police services, that would be covered through general fund taxes. Total number of fees in our fee schedule is 2,347. We did not change any fees, or there are no proposed changes to 1,469 fees this year. We are deleting 35 of them. Those are primarily because they're a little outdated. Most of them, we don't use that service anymore, or we don't need to charge that fee, so we're taking those out of the fee schedule. There are 30 decreases to existing fees and 39 increases, and three modifications. CPI adjustment of 3.15% is applied to 759 fees, and then there are 12 new fees that are being proposed. So we'll cover decreases, and I'll hit some of the highlights on these. Primarily, in the library, they're reducing their fee for making photocopies, whether they're black and white or copy, color copies. And then there's also in CDD and building and safety, there is a per-window reduction in the special fee for single-family property replacement of windows. And then expired registration for police, we are dropping that from $50 a violation to $50. And then in GWP, they did an extensive review of their fees. Their engineers put their pencil to paper and calculated a bunch of their fees, and these are being reduced for some various overhead services as well as underground services. So there's, the slides will point to you to the page numbers as well as the fee numbers. We didn't want to list them all out here, there's quite a few of them, but those are all being reduced.
Got a question. Why, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Why is the expired registration fee being reduced?
I believe that might be a governmental code.
Oh, okay. Here it comes. The chief, if I remember correctly, it's a governmental code.
It is, just to keep us in, in compliance with California Vehicle Code. They've made some adjustments, and we need to be in line with that on expired registration.
Does that include not having plates?
Not having plates is actually a separate violation. This is for expired registration and being parked on public property.
And how much is it for the paper plates or the...
I think if you actually, if you actually fix the plates, I think it's an administrative fee of $25 that can be reduced to. But it's, but it's in the same ballpark of $50 when it's, if you don't fix it.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't because registration was less important or something all of a sudden. Okay.
On slide 100, there's more GWP electric and customer service fees that we are reducing or proposing to reduce. For example, the easement processing fee, fee number 63, is going from $1,162 down to $834. Same with the permit to encroach.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
On the overhead and underground services, that says it varies. I want to know what is, what are those? I mean, is this for the meter, meter spotting, or...
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilmember Garpetin, it's a variety of things. It's the wire, it's to pull new service, in some cases, you're going to see in a, in a subsequent slide where some of our fees for, for this type of service is going up. But these are customer requested. Now, these aren't permits, these are for us to actually do work. We actually undertake the work and do that, so they're really labor costs is what primarily they are. So we were able to go back, and as, as Michelle indicated, we, we looked at all of our fees in the engineering and the, and the field level, and some were able to reduce, and you're going to see in a slide or two where we had to increase some of those as well, based on our current labor costs. So this is pulling, bringing service to the customer, and then we get it to a pull box, they take it from there and, and connect it to their facilities. That would be then done through a building permit.
Since we have...
Yes.
On number, fee number 63, it says easement processing fee. Is this the easement that we are returning to the landowner?
Councilmember Agajanian, yes. It can include that, it can include us expanding an easement if we need to for new service, but for most of, of what we're experiencing now, it's the processing to turn the easement over. It's an easement we no longer need.
But they are benefiting tens of thousands of dollars.
I know.
Why we are reducing fee in that point rather than helping others with fees?
Mr. Agajanian, ours is only based on the labor cost to actually perform the work. The issue of what the value of the property is and whether or not we can charge for that, I'll, I'll leave to the city attorney.
Again, I think, I think, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, we discussed it before, it's, it's not something that we can charge separately for.
But we charged before, but we have charged before the fee, but we were charging $1,100, and we were not worried about anything but by charging $1,162, and why we are reducing to $834?
So as we look at our, at our fees and our structure, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, Councilmember Agajanian, we have to make sure that the fees that we are charging to the community, to a business owner, to a homeowner, has to be commensurate to what it costs us to do the work. And so, based on, on looking at the fees, and, and we evaluate fees annually, as you know, and some fees we evaluate over a period of time, we have to directly charge what it costs us to do the work, and in this case, it costs us less to do the work today than it did in the past.
So it's an equity issue. And just to add to that point, GWP, in the electric side and the water side, is, is also regulated further, wherein electric, by Prop 26 regulations, one, one area cannot subsidize another, so everybody has to be paying their fair cost of what the service is. And just in fairness and equity, as I said, some go down, some will go up.
Moving along to our increases. In Public Works Engineering Section, they did a review of the traffic analysis and impact review for projects more than 50 trips, the base fee for that, as well as under 50 trips. And those costs are going up. It was been, it's been reviewed by the department, the consultant charges for these. Pretty much the same analysis was done several years ago, it's just a higher cost this year along with staff time. So the proposed fee is going from the first one at $2,178 to $5,927.04, and the second one, which is under the 50 trips, $1,088 to $2,963.52. The next group of them for community development, neighborhood services, for no smoking signs and smoking permitted signs, these are going up based on the actual cost of the sign. And the last one for police, the overnight vehicle, three-night parking fee, is going from $20 to $50. And I should note, back in 2014, when the fee study was done, it was proposed that this fee be, or the cost of this fee was $55, so this is just trying to get it more in line with, with what the actual cost is.
And oversized vehicles are...
I believe it's like the, like motorhomes, that kind of, trailers.
If you want to put it in terms of a relative size, you can basically park a duly-sized pickup truck, and that's not oversized, but when you start getting over about nine feet tall, so any of the box trucks, bobtail trucks, any of those things would be, motorhomes would all be considered oversized vehicles.
Okay, so if, if they want to park that for three nights, it's $50?
It becomes a $50 fee, so that allows you, like, if, if you're going on a trip with your motorhome, you can pull it up in front of your house, stock it, you know, and then go on your trip.
Right. And then what happens if it's there for more than three nights?
Then it's subject to citation.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Slide 103. These are some of the fees Mr. Zern referenced, as far as, that are now being increased based on the new calculations that they, that the department did and looked at the actual costs that are, that's occurring for each of these services. We've highlighted a few on this slide for you. There are more that's referenced in the footnote on pages 153 through 157, all for GWP electric. So some of these highlights include on fee number three on page 153, for overhead services, the electrical panel relocation or update with no service size change, and reusing the existing service conductor, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I don't have, I want page 153.
It should be in your fee schedule booklet.
So we're on slide 103.
It's in this document?
And fee number three, page number 153, which is in your fee schedule.
So for the first one, the fee is going from $211 each to $376. For underground services, that specific class, and I won't even... For underground services, that specific class, and I won't even try to explain what that is, but it's a basic flat fee, from two thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars each to four thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars. And then you can see the rest there, they're pretty technical terms, I think this, I'm sure Mr. Zern can explain these if you have any further questions, but they are increases based on the calculations.
I can have Mr. Zern to come back. One thing before we get to Mr. Zern is the traffic analysis impact review, fifty-nine-hundred dollars, I mean, some of these traffic studies don't even cost fifty-nine-hundred dollars. It's just, I, I think these are very excessive fees, and we have to keep in mind, we keep talking about having more, more, more projects to be more affordable, more entry-level, and we keep increasing the fees that are really, will affect every single project. I think it's, it's, it's gonna discourage people from, from building the type of projects that, whatever we add here, it would be basically transferred to the, to the end users. They would just pass the fees through the, the end users with our, which are the, either the renters or people who want to buy a property, if it be condominiums, if you want it to be entry-level, I think we need to be a little bit cognizant of the, increasing all of these fees. And with that, I want to go to slide one oh three. Can you explain the page, the fee twenty-eight, which is four hundred amp, is, can you explain these two, three fees, that it's being almost doubled?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So that particular fee is an underground service for a single-phase, four hundred amp in a commercial application. This is a new service.
It's a new service.
New service. And as I had mentioned, when, we haven't done an analysis of these fees in probably over ten years. So it is primarily labor-based. It's about ninety-five percent labor and about five percent parts, but our labor costs, and this is all IBW labor, so our labor costs have gone up, and the estimated, we have an estimated number of hours for the job, and when we did that calculation with the new fees, the new retirement and medical benefits and so on, we, we increased it so it was full-cost recovery. And as I mentioned, we, we need, have to have full-cost recovery in our, in our operations.
So if I, if I'm building a new building, and I'm requesting a four hundred amp, single-phase service is gonna, and are you going to bring the, this is just to bring the wire from the, the transformer, it's like stubbing out my property, bring it to my property?
We will stub it out in a, in a, in a vault for you to then take it from there and, and install it into your facility. So we bring it wherever it is, this is an underground service. We will bring it to you, and it will be all ready to go, and you take it from there.
But this cost may, may, may vary depending on the length of the, the wire and the type of the project, and where is it coming from, if the transformer has that, the, the amount of power that needs to have this four hundred amp in there.
It, it can, Mr. Garpetian, but what we do is we take an, pretty much an average of what, you may have some that are a little bit lower and some that are a little bit higher, we take an average of what, what it does, costs us to do it, and sometimes the run isn't as, is, is important, it's just what all of the, the entire labor is for it. So to pull it, you know, another hundred feet isn't as, as big a deal as it is just to mobilize, to get out there, to either climb the pole or, or enter the vault, and those kind of things.
And how about the, if you want to upgrade your service, if you have a single-family house, you want to upgrade from one hundred amp to two hundred amp, is, is that costing here?
Well, if you look right below, and, and it is, if you, if, but if you look under the, the very last fee, fee number thirty-eight, so that's overhead and underground for a single-phase one hundred amp residential, flat-charge adder. So this is where you, we would come in, and this happens to be both overhead and underground, where we would take it from the pole and then put it underground to wherever the stubout is, but this would be for you to add a second pullbox or to upgrade your service. Also, so, so in, in essence, it doesn't take us as long to go out there to upgrade the service, so the fees, we, we spend less time there, so the fees are less.
So if I have a hundred amps overhead, and I want to go to two hundred amps, upgrade to two hundred amps underground, is the cost is twelve hundred?
It will cost less than it did to, to bring the new service to you originally, yes.
On the same item, on the same item, going from five hundred seventy to one thousand two hundred thirty is like two and a half times, or two hundred fifty percent increase. This is, how that can happen, all of a sudden jumps from five seventy to tw- one thousand two hundred thirty?
Well, Mr. Agajanian, it's not really all of a sudden, it's been over ten years since we reviewed the fees, so it is, it is catching back up right now, so in essence, it, it does look like all of a sudden, but this is gradually occurred over the years as our labor costs have gone up. Our labor, our retirement, our medical, our overhead costs have all gone up, and we haven't kept pace with that, so we needed to adjust a whole list of fees, as, as Ms. Flynn said, are in, in the fee schedule. But in some cases, we had decreases, as I said before, and in other cases, we had to make some substantial increases based on our current labor costs.
Slide one oh four, we have a couple more from GWP. This is the preliminary electrical engineering services from three hundred and sixteen dollars to three hundred and forty-two dollars, and the permit to occupy fee from one hundred and fifty-eight dollars to one hundred and sixty dollars. And the next category is modifications to existing fees. What we're doing here is, the department has decided that they want to split out this one fee into two components because of the process that it, that the applicant gets through. So the one fee that is being removed is, is basically being replaced with two additional fees, and the cost is overall going down. So the density bonus review, review of density bonus housing plan housing fee is being, it was nine thousand three hundred and ten dollars, that's being replaced by the density bonus housing plan at two thousand two hundred and eight dollars, and then the density bonus housing agreement at three thousand fifty-two dollars.
So for, so for that density bonus plan and agreement, it would be five thousand two hundred and sixty instead of nine thousand?
Correct, if they get all the way through the process, yes. Then we had seven hundred and fifty-nine fees in our fee schedule that were subject to the CPI adjustment, as I mentioned. That percentage was three point one five, issued by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and we always utilize the month of January, so that was January two thousand nineteen. There were multiple departments that had fees that were affected by the CPI increase, Community Development, Fire, Glendale Water and Power, Library Arts and Culture, Police, Public Works, and then some other miscellaneous city fees.
If I may, before we go into the, the user fees, the new proposed fees, I got an email this morning, and I, probably all of us did, concerning the fees for appeals, and I'm trying to find it here in the, is that something that we're going to be getting to later this morning, or can I ask this question, is it appropriate to ask your right?
I don't think appeals are listed in, in terms of any sort of modifications unless it's part of the CPI adjustments, and, and we will look at that. I would assume these are appeals related to Design Review Board.
And planning. And there seems to be a discrepancy for planning, it's four times the fee than it is for DRB, is that correct? And it's, it's just a question of, you know, why would it cost four times more to go through? You know, you have one hearing officer, and, you know, why, why would it cost four times more to appeal one than the other?
What I would suggest, Ms. Devine, members of the City Council, if it is okay with you, let us have staff look at that as we go on to the new proposed fees, and, and as we go through those slides, come back with, with an answer.
Perfect.
For the record, I didn't get that email, so I'm not sure what the, what the writer was exactly.
Just questioning the discrepancy of why it would, would be four times more for one than the other when it's one hearing officer for each?
You say planning, you mean the zoning officer?
Yes, the plan.
For, for variances?
For, for anything, for the planning.
The zoning officer usually look at the, they, he or she will look at the variances, and variances are always a lot more, but let's take a look at that.
We'll take a look, and we'll provide that.
And can we also find out for either next time or so, this three point one five percent CPI increase, what's the fiscal impact of that?
We will have that for you at the end of the presentation.
Okay, new proposed fees. Public Works Integrated Waste, they're proposing a steam-clean container fee. This is for steam cleaning one of, one of your containers, whether it's the recycling or green waste, the cost would be three, thirty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents per container. Library is proposing three new fees here for the rental of their computer lab, whether it's commercial, for, for commercial use, standard or private use, or nonprofit, so there's a different fee for each one, ranging from forty dollars per hour to a hundred dollars per hour, depending on the, the person who is renting it. And Community Development, also in Building and Safety, electronic submittal review fee, this is for a fee that will be implemented once plans can be submitted online, and this is for the review of those fee, of those plans, and that's at a cost of a hundred and fifty dollars.
Question, is this a quicker process than if it's not done online? Is this, I mean, what's the reason?
Is it quicker?
Yes, is it, is that why we're changing or adding this, this fee, because it's more effective, efficient?
Mayor and Councilmembers, yes, the fee is, it's not supposed to be prohibited, it's when you, we plan on going to electronic plant check, that these fees will be assessed upon incomplete plans being submitted. It won't be for the initial time. What it is, it's not meant to be something where it, you would have individuals not want to submit online, it's to, to go ahead and, and have plans be reviewed, and if, at the second time, they're not submitted completely, then the fee would be assessed at that particular time, that's the goal.
Oh, okay, it's on the second submittal?
Yeah, it's so that we ensure that they're, most developers, architects, engineers, and when they submit their plans, will have an understanding as to what the checklist is for these plans.
Right, right. Better be complete the first time, otherwise they're going to pay a fee.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Also in Community Development, Building and Safety, they're proposing a fee for, to be collected to process the construction of a debris deposit of fifty dollars, and a digital processing fee of fifteen dollars, and this fee is to offset the cost of software licensing for the electronic submittals. GWP Electric, these are some new fees that are being proposed, four hundred amp installing meter equipment in standing sections, service fee of nine hundred and sixteen dollars, and the meter megaring test fee of one hundred and seventy-one dollars. Next slide. Also in GWP Electric, these next three, one is a pulse meter service fee to remove the existing utility meter and install a pulse meter and the associated equipment, this proposed fee is six hundred and twelve dollars. And the next one would be a service spot fee, which is a fee to visit a property for the purpose of spotting an electrical service panel for commercial or multi-residential properties. The proposed fee is two hundred and fourteen dollars. And the quick claim summary vacation, only for GWP, and this would be five hundred and thirty-four dollars each.
I have a question on fee number fifty-five from Mr. Zern. This is to install transformers?
Correct.
So what do we do now, we don't charge anything?
Well, this is a special case, so if somebody's putting in a new development, and they want to transform a room, we have that all costed out ahead of time. These are special transformers to integrate with their metering system, so occasionally they'll be, usually this is by request, and, and we have the, the transformers. We have been swapping out or putting these in at no cost, but it does require...
So there's no cost so far?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And as Councilmember Mr. Garpetian mentioned, these are, this is the economic breakdown of all the changes that we're proposing this year for the, for our, all of our different fee categories. So in our decreases, the change in the thirty fees will reduce our revenue by fifty-seven thousand. Increases of the, for the thirty-nine fees, we have an increase of forty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Modifications, thirty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, and this is the CPI increase that was asked about for the seven hundred and fifty-nine fees. The proposed revenue from that would be two hundred and, almost two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and the twelve new fees at three hundred and sixty-one dollars, for a total of six hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. And then that is broken down between general fund and non-general fund, where you can see the majority of that, five hundred and thirteen thousand is in the general fund, and a hundred and thirty-three thousand approximately is in non-general fund.
I just want to touch base with the council as it relates to any items that were covered today, and specifically, anything on the fees, that you may have more specific questions and/or want any sort of detail analysis that we can provide next week, we'd be more than happy to do so, understanding that, that Councilmember Devine had a question related to, to an email. I, I know staff is trying to get the information, I would suggest we would bring that back next week as a follow-up, that way we can get a copy of the email and, and get an understanding of, of what the question is exactly. I think we have an overall answer, but I want to make sure we, we hit it properly for all of you, so please provide that to us at this time, if, if you are ready, if not, you can provide that to me this week, in the next few days, and we will include that in our follow-up if there are any for next Tuesday. And, and as you know, next Tuesday will really be the discussion related to Measure S, where we will provide a menu of options to, to the City Council related to Measure S, and, and a, a discussion related to that in terms of planning for the future of the funds coming in. As you know, the, the funds started coming in as of, or getting collected, I should say, as of April first of this year. And after next week's meeting, we will have our budget hearing in the evening on the twenty-first of May, and budget adoption at six P.M. also on June fourth. With that, I'd like to, to thank all of you, Mr. Mayor and, and members of the City Council, I know this was long and a lot of information, but you, you all have been doing this for some time, and, and we appreciate all of your questions. I'd also like to thank Finance, of course, led by Ms. Flynn and her staff, and, and all the departmental liaisons who are here who have been working tirelessly in putting together a, a plan of action for, for you for the nineteen-twenty budget year.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo Ms. Beer's comments, thank you to Michelle and Adrina for all the work that you've done, and your preparedness is incredible, so thank you all, staff.
Okay, so, Mr. Garpetian?
I can ask my question.
No, I was just gonna wrap, wrap this up and...
Yeah, I just have one question and a couple of comments. In different departments, this was very helpful, and kudos to all of you, this is, this is a lot of work, and was very comprehensive, and everyone else who's here, I want to thank you all for being here to answering our questions. When you say salaries and benefits, that includes, that's all in, right? You know, the, the PERS and everything else, the PERS liabilities every year that we had a five-year forecast and everything, so. So, you know, many people were asking me, you know, between general fund and the total budget that we have, and proposed budget that we have, because many people don't know that we have so many enterprise funds. So, I did a quick calculation here, I'm, I, I hope I'm right, but if I'm wrong, you know, it doesn't matter because I did it in five minutes. The proposed, the proposed budget this year is about nine hundred and eight million dollars.
Correct.
And a lot of people are asking us, asking me, what is the percentage of that total budget that goes towards salaries and benefits and everything else? It's about thirty-two percent, which is a, a great base for any business. If your labor is seventy percent, then you're in trouble. So this thirty-two percent of our total proposed budget is for labor and, and benefits and salaries, and the maintenance and operation is five hundred and thirteen million dollars, and capital improvement is almost a hundred million dollars. So the bulk of our, our budget goes towards maintenance and operation of this entire city and the capital improvement. And the biggest ones that contribute to that overall is GWP with three hundred million dollars, and Public Works with hundred and seventeen million dollars. So half of our, our entire budget is from GWP and, and Public Works, that they have the maintenance and operation.
maintenance and operation as well as capital improvement. So for people to know, this is in a nutshell of one year, eight months of, of work, in a nutshell, this is how it's structured, basically. So I want to thank you all for bringing your support forward. I really was able to understand every, every single aspect of it, almost all of it. And the rest of the questions that we have, I will ask next, next week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
We are adjourned.